Okay, it's seven o'clock and I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 29th planning board meeting. Would you join your pleasurable legions?
Pleasurable legions to supply the United States of America to the Republic for which stands the nation under God in the visible liberty of justice or all.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Arena.
Here.
Mr. Kishani.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Mixel.
Here.
Mr. Rampy.
Here.
Mr. Benway.
Here.
This is an unusual timing for the meeting. It was mixed up in the application process and notifications, so the next meeting was going towards the meeting for Labor Day, which is next week, so it is natural. What, sorry?
What did I say?
Luxury.
Well, it's all the same. So, so not to hold everybody up till the middle of, actually, November 19th before we have a meeting. Everybody was agreement to it, so therefore, here we are tonight on a off night, so what we got? Let's see, we have four items on the agenda this evening, and all three of them are preliminary approvals, and public notice was published in Webster Herald. We've got notification in that, okay? So with that, Dave, why don't you go ahead and start?
1763 Ridge Road Large-Scale Solar System Located at 1763 Ridge Road. Applicant Greenspark Solar is requesting preliminary final site plan approval, public hearing, for the construction of solar panel array encompassing 8.2 acres of a 41.44 acre parcel located in LL District Large Slot Single Family under the Florida title of Webster.
Good evening.
Who may remember this project, we were here, I think we both, about two years ago, had received second approval previously, and had been patiently awaiting some changes to the rules for interconnecting solar panels to the utility grid. And while we waited that out, our permit had lapsed with Don House's retirement this summer, and so we're back here for effectively the same project. The utility rules have been upgraded to make the project feasible again, so we're back in a place where we're ready to move forward. The project is about an eight acre solar farm where the electricity is dedicated to Home Leasing, which is a Rochester-based Ecorp that provides affordable housing communities around the greater Rochester area, around New York State. So the power from the solar red will be provided to reduce the electricity costs in affordable housing developments in the Rochester area.
Yeah, and there's been very little change to what the original site plan as approved was. We're still within the requirements below the 20% coverage ratio for the property. So, again, not a lot has changed, but obviously, one here, all of your questions.
No increase in it or anything like that is concerned?
No, no, it's really, you know, it works out in the sense that the utility line there is actually unable to really handle anything larger than what we proposed there. Essentially, we couldn't go anywhere beyond the size that it is at that moment.
It is a public hearing, so I don't know if there is anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this project. Not seeing any closing public hearing, bring it back up to the board. Same project, just one opposite basket road, just south of the basket road. That huge field there. I don't recall what we, what we put in there for approvals back then. I suggest we just follow the same thing, you guys said, just use the same approvals. I don't know if we put in it, but one concern I have with these things is with cell towers. If something happens to a cell tower, it goes out of operation for whatever reason, that cell tower is removed and the town is holding money for that. Did we ever do that with this?
We did not get a decommissioning plan in this initial, I'm sorry? We did not get a decommissioning plan in the submission, which was required under our code.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, so then we should have, ask to have that given, okay?
Maybe like a letter of credit.
Okay, yeah, that's where, that's where I was going with that. I didn't know if you had a, I didn't know there was a requirement to even have that, that plan, but if that's the case, yeah, let's just ask for that.
Yeah, I'd recall at the time, maybe it wasn't required, but it was a little while back, so.
It's always been there.
It's a pretty, you know, it's not, not really a big deal. We have a pretty standard decommissioning plan that we submit with these properties, so that, that doesn't, shouldn't be an issue for us for that.
All right, then, I would suggest that we do that, file that with the town?
Yeah, we'd be happy to add that as part of the building process.
Okay, and then whoever's required by engineering for a letter of credit on, you know, the amount is.
Yeah, we're happy to do it. The, typically, a letter of credit's not required, as the value of the equipment, the value of the steel, even if it were defunct, would be worth more than the cost to remove it. So we've never, not typically seen any town actually require any sort of formal letter of credit. What we typically do is provide a decommissioning plan to the building officer, the various towns that we work in, and then you can see very clearly how sort of simple these are to remove. Recalling that, we're not putting any concrete in the ground, this is just a powdered steel post into the ground, so it's fairly easy to remove if they were to become defunct. The opportunity for them to become defunct is fairly limited. We're talking about a system that carries within a 25-year warranty life. We're not talking about something that is mechanically driven or anything like that, requires the type of maintenance, the might see with the winter, and their other mechanical devices. So fairly simple, typically not required to be bonded or, or a letter of credit, but simply that we file with you, here's what you'd have to do in the case of, of the project being, needing to be removed. I'll remind you also that the project, this particular project, over 1,500 feet off of the road intentionally, as we've worked with you in the past, intentionally way back there, so that it is not really going to be visible from any, any endearing Webster.
I remember that.
Of those posts that walk back, I think, in the neighboring parcels.
You were using existing, do I have to believe this?
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's an existing agricultural road that goes along the edge of the property line, and there's an existing, you know, there's a stream crossing, but there's an existing concrete mortage that's been there for 15 years that the engineers look at and give them a sign off and utilize, so.
Okay, as far as a letter of credit, I'm going to leave that. We can bring it up to the engineering department, you guys can work that out. If you feel it's necessary, so be it.
Some kind of guarantee of make sure that, you know, it's not.
We'll put in, they, we'll put it in a resolution that they have to submit you a letter, you know, for this, you know, for removal of it, and so on. And then he'll leave it up to the engineering to determine if they want to charge, correct?
Yeah.
He would just say, I mean, if they're saying they don't do it, I don't know what the rules are or how they do it, I mean.
This is, our, our law came out of the state's standard wording, so.
It did, okay.
They were expecting that.
If you want to impose the condition, I think it's irrelevant what the applicant wants, you're imposing the condition of the board. You've got to tell them in advance what the amount should be, so they know that's only fair.
Yeah, I'd be happy to work that out with engineering. We're not concerned about it just because the cost is the minimum, so we'll provide the decommissioning plan. If you see that cost and say you want to supply a letter of credit, that's something that we totally find trustable, fine. Again, my only point was, because the amount is the minimum, we typically don't see towns ask for decommissioning bond or letter of credit.
Okay.
Any questions?
I have a few more questions.
Jeff, the law that the town had passed then 2016 regards to solar energy?
Yes.
One of the statements, the purpose of decrease the cost of energy to all commercial residential properties in the town of Webster. Now, if I understand it correctly, this is being sold where? Where is that energy going to be sold to?
The, the project will be owned by a company called Home Leasing, and they'll be decreasing the cost of electricity to their tenants.
And their tenants are located where?
Around, around the Rochester area, so, you know, different housing communities that they own in the area.
The law, the, the purpose of the law says that it decreases the cost of energy to all commercial residential properties in the town of Webster.
So the reason for that statement, we were, we were heavily involved in putting the code together here for the town of Webster with Mr. Nesbit and others. The reason for that statement is that generically, what the state has said is that adding solar to the grid brings down the cost of energy to all consumers in New York State, and that's been borne out over many, many studies and other things. So that is one of the reasons why they want us to put the code in place, because they know that that generic is the case. The opportunities for Webster customers, we have, I don't know how many dozen residential customers here in the town, we have a number of commercial customers here in town that are all saving on the opportunity for solar. This particular project, the power will go to Home Leasing, and I frankly don't know if they have any, if they own any other properties.
Yeah, I would imagine they do, they have a lot of properties, but I don't, I don't, we're not privy necessarily to all the, all the, their property ownership in the region, so.
Right, how does that work now? Because it does stipulate town of Webster, it stipulated residents of, you know, Monroe County or something, I'm just.
I think you'd have to make a determination that either the project is beneficially affecting the residents of the town of Webster, or they're not. And if you determine that the project is not benefiting the town of Webster residents, then you may not want to approve the project. I mean, that's the board's call.
See, I, well, if there's a precedent, you want the law's worded for Webster, and then you must have that aside of that.
Maybe the, you could require the applicant to come back and show you how it will be benefiting the residents of the town of Webster.
Yeah, I think you've mentioned too that there might be.
Well, so we're not 100% certain whether or not there's a property in Webster. There's also benefits to the town of Webster, as we will go through the process of negotiating pilot agreement with the town of Webster, also the Webster Central School District, also Monroe County. So we've done that now successfully around Monroe County, different town municipalities, et cetera, so there'll be a direct monetary benefit as well for the community by that payment.
Okay, by that payment, but not overwhelmingly with this project.
So, I mean, the, the opportunity for the town of Webster to directly benefit from a solar project like this is consistently and repeatedly been offered to the town. We're happy to provide you with an opportunity to save money on your electric bills to go solar. Frankly, if you wanted to tell us you wanted to buy the electricity off of this project, we would be happy, we'd go develop another parcel for Home Leasing. But the town hasn't committed to that opportunity with us, which, which is fine, but like, that's, that's a very easy way for me to go forward. We're, we are typically saving our customers anywhere from 15 to 25% off of their current electric bills with the solar projects we're developing, we're doing them really, really all across Webster New York.
Is the water actually related to Heritage Christian?
Uh, because of the change in the interconnection rule, Heritage Christian ended up buying the output of several other solar arrays that we built. So they bought the output from a project in the town of Parma, they bought the output from a project in the town of.
Huron.
Huron, that we, that we build that are now constructed projects.
So this doesn't have anything to do with the original project?
Well, we, we've always been the applicant as, as the owner of the project, but the new customer for the electricity from the project will be Home Leasing.
It's a previous applicant who was with Heritage. Yeah, right, that's, you got a good question.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say that at the very beginning, that that, that Home Leasing was the version.
It was a private development corporation, correct?
They are an affordable housing development community here in Rochester, correct?
So revenues from that benefit that organization, which in turn benefits those, those tenants?
The power will be dispersed to affordable housing communities that they own, reducing the cost of electricity to the tenants.
Yeah, the second was Heritage Christian before. This, this is, this is. I'm looking at someone notes from before, it does say Sun Common. Does say what? It came in as under Heritage Christian. Yeah. Some of the other motions that were made at the time do say Sun Common.
So, we all, we, our, our company has gone through some changes over the last couple of years from branding perspective. We were Sustainable Energy Developments, we rebranded as Sun Common and are now rebranded as Greenspark, with the same corporation we've always been, under the same ownership. We've just changed our names through the course of, of this journey, in particular to this project, and so, but Sun Common was a DVA and Greenspark is our new DVA.
So originally, this project did benefit the town of Webster, at least an organization based in the town of Webster?
One organization with properties in the town of Webster, Heritage is not based here.
So tell me this, when it was Heritage Christian, that's a tax-exempt organization, it's a church?
That's correct. Heritage Christian is a, for, not for profit.
Yeah, right. So this new corporation is what?
Home leasing is a corporation that.
Home leasing is a not-for-profit.
It's also a not-for-profit corporation, correct?
But they are owning the project.
Well, that's a good lead.
Do they, don't they also have market rate, or any standard markets as well?
No.
They might, I mean, they may have some market rate markets, but I know that they do, they pay rings of love, I mean, at the end of the day, we're not necessarily fully aware, not aware, but we're not involved in sort of what, what we see as ownership of their different properties.
This, this particular project negotiating is with, for their forwardable housing communities, whether or not they own other properties.
You guys can direct the power to a certain building?
Yeah, they'll give us a list of metered accounts, and we can direct the output of our solar rates to those people.
It'll operate the same way as the Heritage Christian project operates, right? Heritage Christian owned, I mean, the project originally for Heritage Christian was, they had 80 different homes that they owned, and all those credits were going to those 80 homes. This is a similar type of arrangement, you know, yes, Heritage Christian did have some locations in Webster.
Did, you said, or?
Did, they, they have two prop, they have two properties in Webster.
They do have.
The Stables, and then there was another.
There's the CBS Wonder. So they had two properties in Webster, but they had 78 other properties that they were going to send power to up around the Rochester area, which the projects that they've now bought into are, are doing, are actively doing. So, from the perspective of the change of clients, I understand, I understand the questions completely, I think. The realities of the benefits of solar come to the town of Webster in many ways, right? There's, there's the direct payment loop of taxes, there are the benefits of any community going solar, the power from this project is delivered directly to the grid here in the town of Webster. The benefits of the cost of electricity overall being reduced do come to the town of Webster for a state, as a statewide program. So all of those things do happen. The actual reality of whether or not the consumers are here in the town of Webster, I don't have a precise answer on that, we can get a precise answer on that. But I think there are a number of sort of market intrinsic benefits in the town of Webster for hosting the project, other than just the direct off-take of its electricity.
So what you ask?
We're, I mean, we are paying the utility close to $200,000 to upgrade the substation that serves this facility, as well as the distribution service that serves that project, so that service serves.
So that's beneficial to the town, in a sense, so.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, very, very, okay.
Exactly.
Correct, so we're improving the quality of the grid in the, in that part of this Webster. Again, the atmospheric benefits of reducing our carbon emissions from the town of Webster, the pilot payments. And then again, repeatedly consistently stated, said that any solar that comes on the grid brings down the cost of electricity statewide, and so that's a benefit that we all see as we.
I don't see it in my bill.
I'm sorry?
I don't see it in my bill.
You haven't called me to say you want to go solar yet.
I want to set it up. All right. Is, is the property owned, are taxes paid on this project?
Yes.
So taxes are paid, so it's not a pilot program?
Oh, no, the intention, taxes are currently paid on this property by the homeowner, by the property owner, the Adams. The, we will be negotiating a pilot agreement with the taxes.
Okay, so that, that it'll fall under a pilot program with the town?
Yeah, there will be, I mean, it is agricultural property, there will be a conversion penalty, we are sort of aware of that, understand that the taxes are better, that's, I mean, there's going to be an additional sum of money that's paid to the town for that conversion penalty, so.
All right. Now, did you say, Jeff, do you still have to get a special use permit for this?
Ah, yes, that would be required for, as well.
So given a special use permit, they would have, the town would have to follow the law that was written up, the one that I cited, which, I think we had some great things, but the law says the town of Webster benefit the town of Webster. So the things you're saying, it's great about the substation, but, you know, that's just probably a little piece of this whole thing, because that's a pretty big, a pretty big solar array project to put in there. You know, if, you know, it was different with Webster Christian, because we, we had facilities here, and they were going to feed their facilities through that, that was the whole structure. I think that was around the time this law was written, you know, to benefit the town of Webster. So, I'm just trying to see more, you know, trying to get my arms around. So it says benefit the town of Webster, so what they were saying was by increasing the power in that grid and so on and so forth, that's by increasing the power in that area, it benefits the town indirectly by providing better service for electricity off the grid.
What's the purpose of that?
So I think that would be one way of looking at it, what's that?
What's the purpose of that line of law? Every project with solar, then, automatically benefits the town.
It sure does, so why write that line in the code? There we go. I mean, I don't think there's any stipulation as to how it's supposed to benefit the town. In effect, they're going to be picking up some extra tax dollars, and it's a little structure changes. It does benefit, like we were saying, but indirectly, I guess is a good way of looking at it. Well, pilot, pilot actions are correct. Well, the pilot program, that's good, that's tax dollars, but by increasing, I picked up I was actually boosting up the grid in that area, benefits the neighbors there, I'm sure they do. Yeah, I don't think there's any definition of what this is, it must, this, 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 that. Yeah, I agree with that. All right, well, okay, we close the public hearing.
I have a couple questions.
My closing, though.
Well, I just had a comment.
Oh, all right, why don't you just come out up and give us your name and address, go ahead.
Okay, well, my name is Rebecca Collins.
Well, I can't, you can't, I'm. It's your name and address.
Okay, it's Rebecca Collins, I live at 601 Old Wood Road.
Okay.
And I just wanted to comment that it also benefits the town by making the Webster look good, the city look good, example towards promoting sustainable energy. And it's not all about, you know, what goes in our pocket, or it makes us look good as a town.
That's good, okay, thank you. Jeff's got some questions, I think. What's that?
How are you going to get to this site?
Just an existing ag road that comes through the, comes through the property there, goes back across the creek.
But you're disturbing, I understand what you're thinking of, but I don't know how you can, that's quite a disturbance to a flood plain, under your flood plain. This corner, the thing is in the flood plain.
I think it's already.
Do you know what flood elevation is, under your flood elevation?
Yeah, I mean, that is, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but generally speaking, we're leading edge, we're two feet off of the ground, so I don't believe that we're, doesn't, the modules themselves will not be impacted by.
Do they rust?
Do they rust?
They're going to be underwater.
Well, no, I'm saying that the steel, I mean, the steel will be, the worst case is that the steel rack and the steel piers would be in the water, which is not a concern.
Yeah, scaly, scaly steel sits in wet soil 100% of the time, it's the same thing that sits out of the ground with the prisms. So they're, they're meant to be wet in the elements and underwater at that point. I believe we have a two-foot deep edge, probably, probably a 30-inch.
Flood elevation is 433. And I see parts of this, they're lower than that. Have you thought about getting an easement from the adjacent property, so you don't have to disturb the flood plains?
I have nothing on this project that's below 438.
40.
438 is the lowest. Nothing on the project that's below 438.
Does the, does the, does the road, the farm road, does it go back in there now?
Yes.
So it's already existing, right?
It already exists.
That's how they asked, I mean, that's how they formed that piece of property.
Okay, so then that should be, is that, remember the lady, I guess, they had a dairy farm or something?
Yeah, they just, currently, it's just, it's been used as a hayfield and they.
But it's, if the road is there, it's accessible.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and there's a, as I mentioned, there's a concrete, a very substantial concrete pad that crosses over that, so we had an engineering study done.
So it doesn't, you know, there's no disturbance to be done until you get right to the site where you're working? The site you're working is not a wetland area?
No.
Okay, that's good, then, all right.
But it is flooding, and it still requires a distinct, different permit to disturb any area in the flood.
In the flood, in the flood.
A floodway. No, here in the flood plain, floodways, the, it's right over the creek. All the little axes is flood, here's. See all that blue area on this net?
Yeah.
That's flood plain.
Right, that's right.
And to be disturbed in it.
Yeah, the northwest corner of New Ray's.
And the disturbance, what is the?
Requires, requires a permit?
What's the disturbance threshold for permit? Is it any disturbance level?
If one is less than one acre, then it has to come.
Our disturbance is significantly less than, disturbance is not equal to behavior to, right, right, just putting in, pier into the ground.
Your initial application said 7.5 acres.
That is.
Now I heard tonight you're at 8.2, which if you take the 20% coverage, you're at 19.8. And that probably doesn't include a driveway.
We're not building a yard.
I mean, it doesn't.
You're not going to need emergency access to this facility?
We have access to the facility, there's going to be.
In a rainstorm, when it's underwater? I, I, a lot of gaps here, I don't know.
I mean, this is, I mean, the point of this meeting is for you to act, you know, suggest to us or tell us what you would like us to incorporate for this. Like, is that like us to upgrade the road, we'd be happy to upgrade the road, but we don't currently, for neither for the construction nor the long-term maintenance of this project, see any need to upgrade that road.
Are the, are the thoughts, the lines overhead or the underground?
They're over.
They're over.
Well, there's a permit you need to get additional from the town.
What other gaps have you seen, Jeff? How can we help you answer your questions?
Well, I've only just gotten retired, so I've kind of late to this game, I apologize.
Can we do this? Why don't we, if we can, if we're okay with the site, because we did approve it once, basically back in there for a year. It's an attack. Suppose we give it a full, a preliminary approval and then they come back in before we get a final approval and resolve all those issues, whatever they may be outstanding.
You're going to have to make a recommendation to the town board, a special use permit.
Regards to the.
What's that?
Kind of regards to the board.
Anything that goes, isn't anything, in a large scale, so that's a special use permit from the town.
Jeff, a letter sent, good, very good. Because the thing we've ran an extension in September 2018. A letter came in in September of this year. The only reason we're seeing it now is because of some spammers getting things polished.
Yeah, it wouldn't have been done.
So this thing in summer space is just here for an extension.
It can't, right.
Is it?
What's been going on with that construction, did you?
Well, they came in to, they came in to request the extension.
They came in to request the extension in August, actually, for the first time.
Okay.
That was during, that was during Don's, Don's, I think, retirement party. And, and then it lapsed, and that's why we're back here to talk about it.
They came in though, didn't come back to the board, so I guess my question really is.
Run from the date of the extension that's created by the board, year to year.
Yeah, so it's been. Year to year, but even though it's an internal problem, why it didn't.
That's a problem.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
So if we held it up?
If it has, we see, it has to pay for another approval.
No, no, I, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, sorry, I took it the other way.
I'm saying if, if it came into the town six months ago and it got screwed up, if the extension expired, the extension expired. That, that's what it is. You can't change it.
You know, if the town is screwed up.
Whose error was is a problem.
I, I don't bring it up as anything other than a process for you to understand where we're at. But I, we're here, we're here to get the verbal word requesting, which is preliminary second.
From my perspective, since the approval expired, I would first, were to consider this new application. So if it's a new application and Mr. Benway says I need X, Y, and Z, he needs X, Y, and Z because it's a new application. Even though it was previously approved, that's the way I would care. The board may take a different position, but that's what I would advise the board.
I think what Derek is saying that had not been the fault of the town, the, the, way here, they would have fallen within the period of time.
Yeah, I certainly respect that town doing that was at fault.
Uh-huh.
What did the town do that was at fault?
Well.
Put out this, the extension, this is a temporary extension.
It would have already been gotten its approval. It would have already been in before the deadline now, so really it would have been just an update. Now it's, now it's in the, you know, we're.
There were a month past it, because it wasn't.
I don't, I don't know that it's, that if an extension comes in and it's a task of automatic approval, the town has the right to review it. I can find some language there, but.
We're, we're, just, just to put this at ease as of the advocate, we're perfectly happy to endure and work with you on the process. We want to be good partners of the town of Webster. I'm a town of Webster resident myself, so I, we're not asking for any kind of slave donk here. I mean, what I'm, we are looking for, sort of, you know, our expectation was that this would move fairly quickly since this board has already approved the project, as has the town or previously, so we were thinking it would be expedited, but, but we're also happy to answer your questions and move this forward in the appropriate way that you tell us. So, you know, we're not, we're not here to push things.
Sure.
That, that being said, I mean, we are ready to build the project, have a customer, you know, have the solar panels already at our office, that kind of stuff. So we are excited about the project at this point.
Why don't we table it so it can address those issues?
We can table it, but I'm, I'm thinking our next meeting, I'm going to want to pile more stuff into it.
May, may, may I ask why there's not an opportunity for a preliminary second approval? You've done really.
You can do it, right?
Ask anything, that wasn't.
That gets you closer, but they don't.
There's nothing that you're asking, Jeff, that seems significant to the overall plan of the site, right? So that, that's why I don't see any reason why we can't afford it, at least on that basis.
Okay.
But I guess my, my follow-up question, I think, is it's now they've turned their understanding that this is a new application? Or we're going to have to redo secret?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, because if you remember, this was a type one action.
Correct.
And we'll have to go through the entire processing.
The new secret handbook, as the language you hear about installation of solar energy arrays, probably 25 acres or less. Unfortunately, you're not 25 acres less. I'm not sure if that means the size or the amount of disturbance.
That's also regards to things that are put in landfills, public real lands, that wouldn't apply to this particular.
In your case, I think.
The issue that they have here is the size of the parcel because it is ag, when it reduces everything by 25%, so that's why it's a type one action before. So we would have to go through a process of reestablishing ourselves as an agency, going through the entire secret review process. And as a new progress, there is new secret regulations underneath this. We'll have to determine if you have to do a scoping session.
Derek, am I, am I just, is it important, is that, I'm not sure the secret process, because the timeline on your site plan approval has expired, I don't believe that secret process also expires.
Well, that was the determination.
I'm not, I'm not sure that that process needs to be.
That's, that's why I asked.
Why would you say that? What authority do you say that would?
Fundamentally, my understanding of secret, which I'm, I'm just bringing up the point is I don't, I don't know that there's any reason why the previous secret determination would have expired in two years or actually in one year when it was extended. So I'm, I'm asking the question more than driving the answer here.
I think you, I think you can't look at it in the rearview mirror from my perspective because you've been sued over the years, 20 years that I've been here. You look at it from the front end. If it's a new application, you always do secret and that's just the way it is. Because if we don't, there's new regs now and I presume that we have to comport with the new regs.
Well, there, there actually isn't any change to the regulations.
Excuse me, this is finished, sir. The old approvals would be subject to the old regs. So I don't understand how we would use the old regs when the new regs are effective.
No, well, the new regs are related to landfills and other things that don't apply to the project at hand. There's nothing fundamentally changed about the secret code in the last two years, as far as I understand, related to this type of ground mount solar. So my point to you is I don't believe there's anything to change in the law. And I'm about to build a 25-year asset here. The secret project, the secret process will not change, will not be, that determination will not be allowed to change. So all I'm suggesting to you is I'm not sure, I'm not saying I, I know or don't know, that the secret process needs to be re-engaged. I don't think that determination necessarily changes.
Well, one, you're not going to get sued. We are if we screw up seeker. So we have a motivation to make sure secret process is done properly. Two, if you actually have a case which says I don't want to do seeker again, please provide it to me.
I, I don't know.
Saying you're not sure or you're sure doesn't really help me.
Sir, I don't understand.
Let me finish, please.
Why are you being adversarial?
I'm not. I'm just trying to tell you my point.
I'm a developer, trying to develop a project in this lovely town that I also live in, and you're acting adversarial to me for absolutely no reason.
Well, because I want to protect my board.
Well, protect your board, but there's nothing to be adversarial.
I'm not being adversarial. I'm going to have some case law.
Okay, hold on, guys, let's start all.
If you have some case law which says that I'm wrong, I'm willing to admit I'm wrong.
I, I apologize. I wasn't trying to be litigious. I was just trying to talk through an issue.
Well, the whole thing is with the new parts to the seeker, the state kind of did to us favor. Originally they were going to exempt these kind of facilities, then they got back through this lengthy application of comments and they threw all these extra things in. So part of it wasn't anybody who's involved, but they created it. It's very, it's very complex to see if it's. If we're going to make a type two, now it's probably a type one like Derek says.
We went through it as a type one the first time.
Yeah, okay. We could probably use the same information that we had.
We can do this.
So we just had to go through some reg.
And I'm fine with that. I've already seen that. I'm fine with that.
And you may be very well correct. Maybe some, nothing fundamentally changes, but we've been sued before for not doing seeker when there was an additional, when this, when the project expired and then we had to redo seeker. So it doesn't benefit you and it certainly doesn't benefit the board not to be.
10-4.
Okay, we're back to ground zero. I, I don't. For a second, I don't, I hate all the cabling because I don't want to compound our next meeting. You've got enough, our plate, we're done.
Well, as, it's not going to be on the next two years. It just doesn't work there.
Because of?
Because we have to establish ourselves as a lead agency. We have to make the proper notifications to other agencies to make sure that they're okay with it.
That's a 30. New seeker.
That's a 30-year term. And we won't, we're not going to be all active. We're in our file tonight. It's just establishing ourselves as an agency and then the clock starts to sound secret.
Yeah, you're right, Derek. I agree. I mean, you probably can use much of the information that was provided with the original seeker because it's probably not going to change.
Yeah, the only thing that has changed within seeker that may have an effect on the project is now they're able to sit, because it is a type one option or action, there's a clause in it that said they have to do a scoping for a final environmental assessment. But that's actually in order to determine whether or not it's going to be needed, needed or a full environmental impact statement needs to be prepared. And we didn't go down that path.
No, we could pretty much follow the same movement we did last day, but it's just the process is going to take the time.
I thought it was for everybody unnoticed.
Yes.
You should come out in 3D.
Now, I do have a copy of the resolution from the board, re-read that.
Go ahead.
Where does the town of Webster planning board consider to be plus by applicant, still some common.
It's not green spark solar.
Well, can you be happy to put back and re-reprovide it, Doctor? Okay, it's, it's green. Green spark solar to construct a 2,537.76 kilowatt DC, 2,000 kilowatt AC, a little bit near ground mounted commercial solar unit system encompassing approximately, and this is the original thing, so 8.2 acres, 41.44 acre parcel have an SPL number 081.01-1-21.11, located in LL District, large life single family, which is all located, also located in Monroe County Eastern Agricultural District number six. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board determine that the action is subject to a single agency review pursuant to part 617.6b form of seeker and that it is the most appropriate agency for the determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates itself lead agency for the proposed action. Be it therefore resolved, the planning board has determined that the action is a type one action based on the following criteria. The action involves the physical alteration of approximately 8.3 acres in an agricultural district. Number two, physical alter, alteration of land exceeding the definition of type one action as described in section 617.4b 6.1 and 617.4b 8, as amended by the new secret regulations. Be it therefore further resolved that the planning board shall make the necessary notifications on involved agencies, including but not limited to the town of Webster, town board, the New York State Department of Agriculture, New York State Department Environmental Conservation, and before the New York State Public Service Commission, and number five, the US Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay, we have motion to start the second.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Wixel.
Aye.
Mr. Rampy.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Fushani.
All right, that starts, starts the clock for the table. The only thing we can actually do now, we beat the table, we have to finish until a month, so we do what, December?
November, December?
Yeah.
December 3rd?
We have to go 30 days. That would be 129 in the next meeting after that.
December 3rd.
The third.
It's just to clarify, so, so that, this initiates sort of that for the timeline of the.
Yeah. All right, yeah, I'll make a motion to beat tables until they have forwarded their seeker information as a type one and the date, and it will be December 3rd.
Okay. Mr. Fushani.
Aye.
Mr. Wixel.
Aye.
Mr. Rampy.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
All right, I'm in the second one.
Thank you.
743 Talron Solar System, okay, Talron Epican Renewable Rochester is requesting preliminary final site plan through public hearing, located on 0.83 acres, located in a R3 single family district under, uh, under 400. Sorry.
Hello?
Uh, James Stephen Reed, I go by my regular name, Stephen, and I'm with ACIS Energy and Renewable Rochester. We're doing the AS Renewable Rochester.
A little bit here.
Thought my voice was loud enough. Okay, I'm James Stephen Reed of Renewable Rochester, ACIS Energy.
Yeah, what's, what's the plan?
Well, the plan is we're trying to put a small, small solar array on Mr. Bennett's property here. It's a ground mount. We went through, we tried to keep it, you know, back in the corner of the lot. We're knowing that the neighbors would be able to see it. It's not a huge array. It doesn't take up probably less than, much less than 20% of the lot. Much, much, much less, I guess.
How big of an area does it have? How big an area do you cover, Bill?
432 square feet.
432? So it's stuck way back in, right?
Yes, it is.
Now, it requires a setback of 25 feet. Do you want to go for variance or do you want to move it back?
No, I'll move it back. That's all, that's all. We have the space. I'm sorry, I thought it was 20 feet, so that's, that's not bad.
What's the power? I'll put on that. I was just trying to pull that up here on computers. Was it, is it going to do?
Power? I don't, it's, it's like, is there a, may I, may I, or what do you? Sorry.
It's the same, you're sorry.
What does the side have to be, Jeff?
This is. 25. Okay, so it's got 25. It's a 0.28 kilowatt system.
So you're going to move it five feet?
Yep.
Bring five feet in for losing the property.
Yes.
Stuck back in there, doesn't, what's it, what is that field actually there?
Yes, that's a.
It's an energy field.
Yeah.
Owned by the next applicant.
And no houses, I mean, there's no close neighbor, no other close friends.
Two every lot between the next day. Anybody any concerns about this? And again, this is a public hearing, so if anyone wishes to...
It's hard to see a drawing of it, where it's going to be and anything?
Um, like, I'm... Tell you what, here, here, tell you what. You want a plus? I'll give you the one I've got. It's not, it's not really... In front of the trees, there's...
Oh, this is there. Oh, this is where. Yeah, raised up.
The other one, if you see, is the median group across the road, this, this top tier's there. Yeah, so this, you know what?
Did it answer for you, okay?
Oh, yeah.
Here, do you want to see it?
I'm in with...
And then, uh, Bruce's. Well, that's another application.
Oh, absolutely. Well, I gotta look at another one.
You're not going anywhere.
You won't be able to see that, I'm ninety-nine percent sure.
Okay, any trees coming down? Dale, have taken any trees down or anything?
I've cut some trees on my property so it could possibly fall on it. I just trimmed leaves on the southwest of the... One of those eastern white hines, the branches fall all the time, so I trimmed some trees there, so they won't fall on this.
They'll come up the next act.
Okay, let's, yeah, let's, we gotta, if you want to keep talking, we're gonna have to have you come up, give us your name and address, otherwise...
Okay, anybody else? Concerned from the board? You're okay with it? Let's move it in, meet some appointments, if more variances required. Keep it all power inside. Yep, that's personal, yep. Personal operation. All right, everybody's okay, you want to do a secret?
The Town of Webster Planning Board consider request by applicant Renewable Rochester to construct a 432.8.23 kilowatt solar array located at 743 Tallow Run, having SPL numbers 064.17-3-18.1, located in R3 Single Family Zone District. Planning Board classify the proposed action as a type 2 action under Section 617.5c9, distinct environmental quality review regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
Hey, Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Rampy.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Fashani.
Aye.
Okay. So you want to make a motion for the approval? Yeah. Make a motion for the approval of 743 Tallow Run Solar System, subject to PRC cabinets, that we see there, and 743. The applicant has agreed to remove the array that will in... No, twenty-five. Twenty-five feet.
Yes, they do, yes.
All approvals should be constructed according to the specification of Town Webster, all cycle of compliance with the standards of Town Webster, apply with all requirements of the county.
Yes. 919.
Okay, Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Rampy.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Fashani.
Aye.
Subject to PRC cabinets, subject to voluntary approval conditions, subject to all applicable government fees, subject to Department of Public Works approvals, certificate of construction, so it should occur within one year. As DVO planning board, it expires around ten. Then twenty-nine, which is on the legacy. I'll second that.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Rampy.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Fashani.
You all set? We got one. I'm here for the national too, if you want to.
I'll read it. 635 Timothy Lane Solar PV System located at 635 Timothy Lane, applicant Renewable Rochester is requesting preliminary final site plan approval, located in 10.47 acre parcels, located in R3 Single Family under the authority of Town Webster.
Okay, do I need to state my name and all that again? Okay.
James Stephen Reed of Renewable Rochester and ACES Energy. Of Haggard, Rochester.
That looks like this was two arrays.
Yes, this is a two-array system. It'd be pulling a little bit over 24 KW in size. The space that we would be using is about 1,392 square feet of space. The arrays will be taken up, two of them together.
Uh, is that 10 acre parcel?
Yes.
10 acre parcel. Everything before is the array goes, is surrounded by trees, and there's really nothing visual to the neighbors that I know of, and I've walked the property. We are well within the setbacks.
Again, for the record, the public, anybody wishing to speak before against, no one? Why don't you go ahead?
I need to use another picture.
Okay, here, we can do it. This is, it's cool, but you can see, I want to buy.
They got it, can you do it?
You got one up there?
I got one way here.
Okay, good. You might see it.
Yeah, no, I got mine.
You won't see it there. Okay, you guys all set?
I am.
Okay. All right. Any issues with this, for what's saying is ill. All right, will we see her again?
Town of Webster Planning Board consider request by applicant Renewable Rochester to construct a 1,282 square foot, 24 kilowatt solar array located at 635 Timothy Lane, and SPL number 064.13-1-64.1 located in R3 Single Family Zone District. Planning Board classify as a proposed action as a type 2 action under Section 617.5c9, distinct environmental quality review regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Rampy.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Fashani.
Aye.
Make a motion there? Yeah, make a summary. 635 Timothy Lane Solar System, subject to PRC cabinets, all approvals should be constructed according to the specification of Town Webster, all cycle of being in compliance with the standards of Town Webster, apply with all requirements from the state, county, or town agency, and approvals are subject to preliminary.
Same date. It was 919, thank you.
That's motion. Okay, you have a motion.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Rampy.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Fashani.
Aye.
Okay, make a motion for final approval. 635 Timothy Lane, subject to project, county, and town cabinets, subject to voluntary approval conditions, subject to all applicable government fees, subject to Department of Public Works approvals, certificate of construction, so it shall occur within one year, as DVO planning board, expires around ten, twenty-nine, twenty-twenty, conditions for voluntary approval detected by the planning board. That's a motion. I'll second.
May I add, subject to your resolution, final approval?
Yep, subject to resolution, final approval. Okay, I'm second.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Rampy.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Fashani.
Aye.
Hey, you're all set.
Thank you so very much.
Motion's up. Enjoy. You run an extension corridor. This is where else? Mine, mine behind you. Creek Edge subdivision monument sign located northeast corner of Lake Rory and Creeks Edge Drive, applicant Creek Edge H.O.A., was a sign approved for an 18 square foot monument sign under the authority of Town Webster.
Hi, my name is Macey, and I'm president of Macey Garden Project.
Anybody have a drawing of that?
Yes.
I don't have one.
I'm looking at the drawing that I see on here. Excuse me, line types that I know are here are consistent with railway lines. It appears that you have a sign located in relation to the edge of the road, not in relation to the railway.
And in any of the cars, when you pull, it's received from both directions. So one side is signed.
Well, the setback is supposed to be from the railway, not the edge of the road. So, right now, the way, the sign, at least the way I interpret your drawing, is actually within the road, railway.
No, the lines, the outside lines, that heavy line.
There's a heavy line, and then there's another one, three dashes out there. I just, I mean, this isn't really good.
Sign is two 25 foot back from the railway.
Yes.
It's a blow-up of something.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's a blow-up of a instrument survey map, but it's not clear as to where all of her is.
The heavy is, the heavy line that goes left, right, is the right.
What's the one behind it?
Neither way.
It doesn't say either way. Regardless, it's still within, it's 25 feet off of Lake Rory, the way I interpret this one is. That's the other thing.
Yeah, just kind of what it is. You're seeing that line right there? There's a line right here, that's one of these.
Okay, still, if it's the other line, we're not...
Right. Still, still is 25 feet, I got that part already.
I thought we did.
I thought, no.
That's what we should have had.
Get it from the edge of the pavement, not the edge of the railway. I just looked it up.
Yes, same way. It's true of the lake road and also the Creekside Drive. The sign is too close to the road.
So we will comply with the setbacks on each one?
What we'll do is approve it, and then just make it subject to you showing a drawing where it's located, which is 25 foot from any, any railway.
I thought my daughter did that, I'll talk to her tomorrow. So, yes, we will comply with the setbacks.
That way it'll...
Thank you.
Sign is a nice little sign.
It is, thank you. You need to nice, one by one?
What's that?
That's a very nice miniature.
Oh.
Thank you.
Is there lighting on this thing?
There is lighting, there is, there, we have a temporary sign there now, and there's a spatula in it. It goes on and off with light sensor.
So it's just down later, up later, and it's not from...
It's, it's up, it's underground, and it...
It's the same.
Shines out of the same, yes, into the project.
All right. Anybody any other issues with it? Will we see her again?
Sure.
Move ahead.
Town of Webster Planning Board consider request by applicant Creeks Edge H.O.A. for 18 square foot monument sign located northeast corner of Lake Rory and Creekside Drive. The planning board classify as a proposed action as a type 2 action under Section 617.5c2, distinct environmental quality review regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Rampy.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Fashani.
Aye.
Prove for the sign, sorry.
Make a motion that the sign, Creeks, Creeks, Creeks Edge, Creeks Edge H away.
Actually, I just made it subject to the setback, 25 foot from the road.
Yes, subject to setbacks.
In the railway. And the lighting be directed just to the sign. Okay? I'll second that. All right, everyone?
Mr. Rampy.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Fashani.
Thank you. You're all set.
You're good.
Okay, I think that's... Well, I guess we're all set for the evening, thanks for coming in.